Call this special meeting to order Thursday, December 12th, 2019, 6:00 PM. It's the second functional space work session. Join me and the flags leader, Director Collins.
Absolutely, Ben. Write it over your heart, Veterans May Salute. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Small talk, please.
Director St. Service.
Present.
Director Powell Box.
Here.
Director Parent.
Here.
Director Calvins.
Here.
President Green.
Here.
So, motion approved the agenda for this evening. Motion's approved the agenda.
Second, sir.
Second.
Green, on favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ah, zero.
Is there a... There's no closed session. Is there any public comment on any items not on this agenda? So, we're right in the work session items. Discuss the need for district master plan.
So, Director Calvin sent some requests that for a master plan, we talked about need and needs. Your future being a year, five years, 10 year, and you're gonna point your need. You guys had mentioned some things that you wanted us to bring back information in regards to discussions that we had at the last meeting. Of cost, being able to facilitate some of this plan and some of the plans that were here. We reviewed a plan based on what's being proposed and what's needed for the district, for the fire department, and what would happen here. It's kind of a real dynamic situation because depending on the directions that the district decides to go would have a heavy impact on all of those plans. So, we gathered information for each one of them based on what the need was. Of course, you guys have already been presented most of this and you know a lot of the things to take into consideration. Part of a master plan moving forward, though, we need to identify more of the need and what role this whole part is gonna play in that need. We have a couple of options to go. And we've got to venture into each one of those. So, I know Scott's put together some stuff on the plan on the fire department. Cal's put together a lot of plans for the future of the wastewater plant and the general operation of the CSD. We've already addressed some of the issues that we've brought up about payment plans and travel and traffic and those type of things. And hopefully, we've come up with some answers for that. And as far as the overall master plan, knowing what the growth is gonna be in this district and the impact that it's gonna have on us and things that we may not even have facilitated at this time, one of them being a beat station for local law enforcement and the sheriff's department and how that can be incorporated. So, that's what we're at with it. To start the discussion...
I'd like to get some sort of consensus from them. Do they want us to start making a master plan also by the end of it? Because it was discussed in the last meeting, but I believe that that's what we're gonna do.
In response to that last meeting, there was an outreach from Director Calvin with some questions in regards to, like I said, the immediate needs. The immediate needs, but you can't ignore long-term needs and then how to bridge in between them. So, I think what we need to do is just put our heads together and kind of find out what the immediate need is and then how do we start facilitating those needs? Because a lot of this plan, you know, it leaves out one place where you're adding a plan for another. If we are gonna put a plan together, though, my idea, thought of it, and the consensus of what I've gathered so far is that temporary and doing things that just meet our need right now are gonna be temporary. They're not gonna meet our needs down the road. So, if we put a lot of effort into that, we're gonna be revisiting this on a regular basis. I know it's gonna always be a moving and growing document, but we can't just put a bandage on something and expect it to work for 20 more years. So, I know that when I talked to Scott and we looked at the plan for the fire department, we have a lot of options, but it's, there's 100 options. And when we talk about all the different ones and the expense, how to get the money, and where we see this in 20 years. Same thing with the wastewater plant. This is gonna meet the growth and the development of the district over that period of time. Where if we continue like we are, if we just keep making the facility meet our immediate needs, by the time we get to where we need to be, it's gonna be way more expensive. So, we have to look at that. And there's a lot of hidden changes that can come along that can be very costly by not having a master plan and just meeting our needs as we want. So, open for discussion. How do you wanna proceed with the thought on master plan?
I think, just real quick, if we're going to proceed into a master plan, master planning effort, we need to hire a consultant. So, it's gonna be a cost involved. We could sit here and scratch our heads all day long, but we're not master planners and that's a specialty that an architect would require. They're not very cheap. But, you know, that's the direction we are choosing to go. If we are choosing to go, I strongly suggest that we hire a consultant.
I would speak myself, but I think that having a master plan in a district, why, covers the entire district, you know, is a beneficial idea. And I think that it would be something ideal to give us direction for the future. However, the caveat that I see is that there is a county master plan that exists already, point number one. Point number two, we don't really have the ability to control our own destiny. So, we can come up and we can pay a consultant to devise this grand master plan, but we may not be able to stick to it based on what the county will allow or not allow us to do since we are, again, controlling our own destiny.
That's just a good fatal flaw with a master plan.
Right.
If you work at a university, you know how it goes.
Right. Your end product is not what your master plan is. It's sad because it changes.
Yes.
So, you're putting out a lot of effort for suggestions that you may not be able to...
Right. If there was some coordination, then we could get buy-in from the county levels where our master plan would supersede theirs. I'm sure theirs is outdated and probably obsolete at this point anyway. But if they were gonna use ours as a guideline in the future, then I'd be in support of it. But I would not want us to just expend the money and have, you know, these big dreams and plan for our community and then the county says no.
And part of their plan is looking at small districts and how small districts function. So, they go to the cookie cutter of numbers, percentages, and make recommendations. And you guys oversee and hear all the functions of the district and we work in it. And so, us being very involved by making a master plan and then having a consultant that we soundboard off of and that they can build something based on what we truly identify, I see two parts of it. The county master plan might cover it, but it's just kind of like a template fill in the blanks because they don't know where we're at in certain things. They don't know about our water infrastructures, needs with the growth. And Cal is probably the only one that truly knows the condition of what lines are gonna have to be replaced. First, I know they looked into that, but they kind of approach it with a cookie cutter template of what they do for districts as such.
Right. I guess my point is if we went through the time and expense of doing it, can we get, again, some buy-in at the county level for some autonomy for our, you know, our future? That we can have a say in what we think is best for the district strictly in what they say.
Well, the San Miguel Community Design Plan is basically the master plan of the county for this area. And that means basically it revolves around land use and what they want it to look like. Our, a master plan for the district would basically be based on our functions, so the five functions of the district. And it may not necessarily be based on land use, but it may be based on population growth estimates and, you know, where, where in general, in the future, we, you know, depending on growth, where do we need new fire stations? Where do we need new well sites? Where, you know, if some area develops, how are we gonna deal with that? Are we gonna need utility yards? Are we gonna need fire stations? Are we, you know, street lighting? All that. Every department we have is gonna have aspects that you're gonna want to see X number of things at 3,000 people, X number of things at 4,000 people and built out that way. I think saying, okay, in five years, we're gonna have this, I mean, that's, it's kind of ridiculous because in five years, you have no idea what's gonna be done. And if you just follow the community design plan, you're not gonna, I mean, they don't, they call out a specific number of people for the next 10, 20, 30 or so years, but it's not necessarily saying that that's gonna, that's gonna happen. It's just a projection. That's basically all any plan really is, is a projection.
I get that. And I see that it's gonna be based upon projected population over time. But it also doesn't incorporate land use because if their, if their population's growing and if the master plan is a master plan, it again is gonna be painting a picture where the district will look like in three, five, 10, 20, 25 years. And a component of that is the land use because without additional land use, it's not a growing, you need a master plan.
And right now, we're dealing with the county on water, water conservation issues, but also dealing with the county on trying to get them to change their ways on how they assess fees on the district. Not the district, but the district. And they seem to be pretty open-minded as far as, you know, allowing the district to take more control. So, if we can, you know, outline a cohesive plan on how we like, how we as a district view the future of this community, then I think that they'd be amiable to, you know, revising their plans or at least amending, you know, sections so that they can, so that we can take the lead on some of these things. Because a lot of things are gonna be well into the future, are gonna be really driven by what the availability of resources are. So, what the water resources, what sewer resources, what the fire department can cover. And those are gonna be the driving factors, not necessarily, is it agriculture or is it multifamily? Because they seem to be willing to change that pretty willy-nilly. So, you know, if you have enough money and enough time, they'll change anything for you. But without some sort of forecast of where we, we as a district think we're gonna be through all of our departments, you know, it's really hard to sit down and say, well, is it a good idea to do something like this? Or in five years, do we think we really get something that's twice that size? You know, it's, it's kind of a gamble, but, you know, for the money you put into it, that helps everybody. It's gonna help in water sewer rights studies. It's gonna help in the fire department determining whether or not they need to go after additional bonds or tax measures. And the lighting, whether or not we're gonna need additional lighting. Or maybe it's in 10 years, you know, this is a full-fledged city. Maybe that's, maybe that's, I can't see that, but, you know, you never know.
Maybe not 10, maybe 20.
Maybe in 30 years, we're incorporated with the city of Pasadena. 40 years, the state's gonna take over, whenever.
All restaurants should be tuckered out.
Yes. Do you agree with us?
Yes. You know, I started thinking about this a bit most in our last functional space. I mean, Director Parent did bring up, you know, where is this community heading, you know, 15 years? It may be city of San Miguel, 20 years, whoever knows. And in addition to our five services, I mean, this is the state law on every single thing this district could do right now if we ever wanted to. And that's what we should figure out, whether or not we do it better or if the county bureaucrats that don't visit us do run the town better than us. I mean, one example, and also not just the community plan, but there are a dozen other plans that govern how this town functions that are quite questionable. I mean, their plan calls for 11 acres of parkland in this town that were deficient by. But when was the last time a new park got built in this town? You know, there's all these other things and different doctrines that keep seeming to run in different directions. And the community design plan at the time was probably the best thing we had to get a general idea, but even then, those population projections are almost outdated because they didn't expect the town to all of a sudden build out every single housing tract that was approved at the time. And now we're going through this really weird phase. I don't want us to waste money, kind of, you know, okay, let's take care of the short term today and then, oh, shoot, now we have a bigger problem five years later. So, I, that's where I wanna go with this and kind of figure out where is our role in that? Is the county doing a good job of managing what they're doing for this town? Is there something that the district needs to look at? What does that look like? And that's a very difficult conversation that we, I think we should have at some point. And I was hoping the master plan might be the opportunity for that.
Well, in all honesty, I started here 14, it was 14 years ago, and they were talking about a strategic plan then. At that time, the district was only five years old, not even five years old. And they were talking about a strategic plan, which is essentially the same as the master plan or would be. And it's been put off and put off and every year it's not, well, you know, it costs too much or we don't need that right now, or it costs too much and we don't need it right now. But, you know, we're at this tipping point where it's becoming pretty obvious that the amount of staff we have is having a harder time keeping up with everything that needs to be done. And where, where are we going? Because we're, we're gonna need to hire more people. We're gonna need to figure out what, what is our priority? What is not our priority? What do we need to put, you know, put a lot of effort into? What doesn't need any effort at all and can manage itself? But without knowing where you wanna be in five years and where you wanna be in 10 years and where you wanna be in, you know, 20 years, not that necessarily, you know, this is what we're gonna be here in 20 years, but the, without a direction and some goal to get, you're not gonna be good with it. And a master plan is something that we could probably muddle through ourselves, but I've seen people start them and totally botch them and start them and not finish them at all. But if we, you know, we could get some pricing on a facilitator to do that and that can be brought back as something that can be a community involvement type activity and with a facilitator's help, it can be all brought together. You know, there's parts of it that the staff can do here, there's parts of it the facilitator would be better suited to doing. And there's probably parts of it that we'd have to have some sort of outside consultant other than the facilitator.
For the, for the things we need to address, do you have a educated guess as to how much we're looking at spending? Considering that we have a water and a wastewater plant, there, you know, could be components of that that are in pretty good shape.
I'd say that our rate study was $60,000. So, I would say that you're probably looking at somewhere near $30,000 depending on how intense it gets.
Right.
And control that budget. Right? You know, without actually talking to those people, I wouldn't have a good, because I've never actually been part of one direct.
This plan that came up here, you know, is like the 30,000-foot level and the value overall. Another thing we're faced with is just in the last two years, the growth here has been... We had to really change the function of how we're doing things internally. So, we're feeling the stress of those additional things that need to be done. So, the recommendation, for instance, the sewer plant, you know, we're not gonna get less sewer. We're gonna get a wastewater. We're gonna get more. So, we have to prepare for that. And things are happening in all the departments that same way. So, having a master plan in that is good. And I completely agree with a consultant that can put us in the right place down the road. But then we also have to address immediate need issues. And I kind of think that's where John was going with having these meetings was about our functional space, what we have right now and what we need at that time. So, it's, but we don't wanna venture down the rabbit hole into something that we're doing that's not gonna fit a master plan or we would have to redo, for instance, this building in this facility right here. We have a lot of options and we've looked at all the different ones, but they come with costs. And if you choose to go one direction, you may be undoing all your efforts now for the final master plan. So, that's the discussions I think we need to also...
I don't think that we need a consultant for that part of it, though. Does anybody think that we need a consultant for...
I'm gonna justify what we put into two locations?
No, we need a consultant.
I hope we get more than that for money.
Yeah.
In-house.
No, but I can see a consultant being necessary for even overall difficulty.
I agree. I agree. Well, as we plan it, though, you're not locking yourself into something that is gonna... That's the only thing I'm thinking on the master plan part of that is if you put all your eggs into one basket and you go down that road and you're, you're building a road off of Inge Street or you're doing something that has a significant impact financially, but we're not looking at the big picture of the level of need that that thing is remodeling the interior of this building. Those kind of things are big steps and you would want that to be effective 10, 20 years down the road. Not build it all in two years later, you're like, okay, we're gonna change it all because now, you know, this is completed or something else.
I agree with that.
Yeah, but to John's point, I don't see that there will be a need for a consultant to guide in what we do with this building and/or the new wastewater treatment plant.
We should have enough...
We would know the needs.
Yeah, we should have enough insight and vision to know roughly where, where we think we're going. Not necessarily as the whole community, but as far as this building and that facility. We have some public comment.
A couple of things. Master plan has been discussed in this district over and over and over and the need for having one. It's even been started a couple of times with some managers who said they could oversee that happening. But there were always other things that came up and it never happened. Very often, it's because the manager was leaving, but...
It was lip service.
But without a master plan, everything you're doing is just helter-skelter. And that's how I feel this department has been operating lately because all of a sudden, we have a need supposedly that has to be met immediately. And so, that's the direction. And it shouldn't be operating that way. It should be, because if you have a master plan, you've set up what your priorities are in terms of this district for each area. So, wastewater doesn't get left out, water doesn't get left out, lighting doesn't get left out. They all have a direction that you're looking at them heading in. And it may change in terms of what happens, but you already have a plan of sorts in mind for new development or new needs. And that hasn't happened from the board in the past. And I really think it's well past due. I don't think a consultant needs to plan the facility. That's not their job really in making a master plan is giving you the direction of which things you need to start planning ahead for because this is gonna happen. And there wasn't, in my opinion, enough lead time to plan for this sewer facility that, as there should have been. And a master plan could help with that. And I agree with Anthony. It needs to happen. The master plan for the community, those are counting on the county, is, yeah, we got the plan done, but they're not even following the plan.
Right.
So, I don't think county is a big problem for planning for this community's CSD services at the moment. If there were other services, it might be. But I think it's important to move forward with a master plan. And I don't think it has to be as in-depth as some of you may be thinking, like developing this plan. That's not a part of master planning.
Actually, actually, I'd like to touch on that. This, the wastewater plan, there is a wastewater master plan that was done a few years back. And it does talk about this. And if people would read that plan, they'd understand where we are today. And I don't really like the, the way that it was worded, that we go about this haphazardly. That's not the case. It's absolutely not the case. You may feel that way that that is not how it's happened. And there is a plan in place. There's been updates to that plan. And, you know, Regional Water Quality has said that that, the plant needs to be built sooner than later. That's, that's, that's the facts.
And I haven't seen the paper that says it has to be done by this date, and if it isn't, what happens?
Paper?
A letter that the district received from Regional Water Quality Control.
Well, it does exist.
Yeah. We can have a copy of it in front of the board.
Well, maybe we should make that, maybe we should make that more out in the open for people. Apparently, there's confusion. And the life expectancy of this plant is, what did we hear, 30, 30 years?
We're planning for at least 30 years, but it should be...
So, a part of the master plan should be considering expansion or some alternative 30 years down the road.
And that's what this is being designed for is, you know, basically modular expansion for the next 30, 40, or 50 years. So, it's, it's not something that we can afford to build something for 30 years from now. And when actually we can...
Just sit, you, sit and rock. Give, you had a comment?
Yeah, we, we hired a consultant a few years back and we're trying to hook San Miguel Sewer to Camp Roberts. And we, Camp Roberts put up 25, Grizzle put up 25, we put up 25. And the consultant came back and told us that our plant was ahead of theirs. It'd be better off if they brought it to us. I don't know if they updated their pawns or not, but I put down consideration to Dr. Camp Roberts again because it was gonna cost us, this is only, what, $7 million? It was gonna cost us three or three and a half, two and a half million to put the sewer line to Camp Roberts. And this, a lot of it would go away.
So, the, there was a study done, had more or less a request from the county. But Camp Roberts wanted to know whether or not we'd be interested in taking our wastewater to Camp Roberts. The gist of that whole thing was Camp Roberts needed to upgrade their treatment plant. They didn't wanna pay for it. They wanted somebody else to pay for it. So, the two options were us going to them or them coming to us. Basically, the nail in the coffin, to my understanding, was when the Army said, or the National Guard, whoever runs it, said that if we go to war, we're getting off. So, if we ever went to war, I'm sure that ever happened, they would basically shut up the line from us to them because they would more or less be at capacity with all the troops going into training. Which meant that we had to have a road to the plant anyway.
Right. I think the other lynchpin was that whole study was based on San Miguel Ranch happening. So, there's gonna be additional 500 homes and infrastructure is gonna be closer to Camp Roberts. Now that's a figure. So, nobody gets a master plan now.
Right. So, the other option was them coming to us. Obviously, we didn't have the capacity to even take their totally empty base sewer line.
Okay.
So, the, the cost to get from here to there was two and three million to go like six or seven miles. But the, the long-term implications were not something that the district should have gotten into.
What else you got?
I don't worry about the comment. Are we getting some more comments?
Anytime you got, anytime somebody wants to speak, just raise your hand. It's a workshop. You...
Nothing. I'm okay.
So, gentlemen, would you like to...
You guys requested for a few things to be brought back from our previous meeting and some more information. And we've gone through... And we've gone through and looked at some of the options that you talked about. We have a couple of plans for this facility which you were questioning and some of the costs associated with that. And also, I know you asked Mr. Dodds for some information about some other options with this plan.
Yeah, how do we, well.
And he can answer, answer that stuff too if you wanna go there.
Okay, so right now, we're discussing the need for a district master plan.
And you guys could jump from there and go talk about the other thing and then come back to it.
We could.
Yeah, if you want.
I, I personally think that there's a need for district master plan. I just don't know that the district has the funding to put forth into, you know, hiring outside for, like, you just discussed $75,000?
Or I said 40, 60.
Yeah, Gibb was saying that the last one was 75. It was 75 to 3, my guess is 50 to 100,000.
So it'll be higher for sure.
I think that over the next year would be a good idea as we go through this process to be thinking about where we're gonna be in the future. And again, it's gonna be based on growth more than time.
Well, we have a lot of projects that are coming in that people are getting started with. And Blaine and I are working really hard trying to identify, on the water and sewer side, identify what those needs are gonna be for those projects now. So that when they actually get to the point where they're coming back and asking for some sort of approval, that we have things identified as far as well sites or sewer stations.
That's what we need to.
Or, you know, additional typing that's required as part of the project. Trying to get those things sort of worked out in the future or now for the future so that it's easier to tell them, okay, this is what you have to do and we're not playing this catch-up thing like we normally do. The, you know, that's just for water and sewer. I think that probably the best course of action is to allow us to at least get some pricing, to get a consultant or somebody to facilitate doing a master plan. And it would have to be approved anyway. So the first step is get a, get a number. You guys can look at it, we can talk about the scope and then we can kind of look at that. And I think that, I think that long-term, we need to have a good direction that we're headed, you know, based on the growth of this town.
If nothing else, we should jump into at least a five-year plan. Cause I, you know, we don't know what's going on this, even the fire department, you have problems recruiting people. We should, we should definitely be looking at how we can fix that problem.
And with what Kelly said, and being that we're, and our functions are so dynamic different. You know, he has Blaine and you have plans and he has consultants that they contact in order to get information regarding that specific field.
He's got two master plans.
In other words, each department, each, each fund actually needs its own plan.